To join us today. As you know, the county issued a mandatory health order yesterday. And we've had a lot of questions from folks and we just wanted to get together with our residents and explain what the order says and how Kaysville is going to be implemented, implementing this. So with me tonight, we have Shane Scott, who is our city manager. And we have Saul Oberg, who is our chief of police. We also have some staff members here to assist us to make sure that we get through this in a timely fashion. So first, let me just say how much we appreciate what you as our residents are doing to make this tough time a lot easier for your friends and neighbors. Thank you for all that you're doing to help one another and to, to assist and cheer people up. So I think first and foremost, we probably need to go and, and talk about what we are currently doing already, what we did prior to this. So I'm going to turn it over to Shane to talk about what this city has done to this point.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I, I think some residents might be interested in what Kaysville is doing from, from a city operations and a, and a staff perspective. I've been virtually meeting with all the department heads several times each week during this, this time, this pandemic. And we'll, we'll continue to do that as we peak and eventually work toward what the, the governor's called that second phase of managing this, this situation. I think he called that the stabilization phase. So I think through, through this first part, we'll be meeting frequently. We've asked many of our 100 plus full-time employees to stay at home as much as possible. Many of those that work here in Kaysville are considered essential, as you, as you might know. And for those folks, we're trying to stagger shifts and, and do our best to keep, keep our operations running smoothly and, and as designed. Although all, all city offices are closed to, to walk in traffic, we, we remain open for business by appointment. Anyone with a question or needing assistance from City Hall can call the City Hall main number at 801-546-1235. We'll do our best to handle those, those questions and transactions online or by phone. If, if necessary, we can meet with individuals one-on-one from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And as we do that, we'll be careful and observe safe physical distancing practices. We've closed all our playgrounds and sports courts, but the parks and trails remain open. We encourage and invite everyone to utilize those amenities for exercise and, and for, for getting out of their home as much as they can. But, but obviously we encourage practicing safe distancing while you do so. Any updated hours or changes to that schedule will be reflected on at kaysvillecity.com. We encourage you to go to our website as much as you can when you need, need information. And maybe Mayor, in closing, I just wanted to tell everybody how proud of each department we are, the ways in which we're pivoting and, and changing things even on an hourly basis as new information comes from our federal state and health department leaders. We're, we're fortunate to be in a good place here in Kaysville.
Thanks Shane. And we absolutely feel like, I love working with this team because everybody is jumping in and finding solutions to these problems. And what I want to really emphasize to our community is you will be safe. Our police and fire are still on top of it. Your water's going to work, your power's going to work, streets are safe. And so just know that the basics are going to be done really well. Okay? So let's talk about what the health order said that was issued by the county yesterday. And I think a lot of people felt that this was a shelter-in-place order, which it is not. It is basically stay home, stay safe, as the governor has indicated that he wants us to be doing anyway. And with a little added bit at the end. So I'm just going to go through the provisions here. So the, the big change, I think, is the general prohibition, no gatherings of any size with those outside of your household. Now, this came from the governor, not from us, not from the county. And it's no gatherings of any size with those outside of your household. My family, we have my son and daughter-in-law, they live in, in Provo. They don't get to come for Sunday dinner. And that's just how it is for right now. And, and the only difference is if there are essential trips that you must take, where you must be in contact with other people, keeping a good social distance of six feet, that is allowed. But no gatherings, no meetups, none of that, when it isn't essential. And I think that, so the requirements for individuals, stay home, stay safe, hygiene standards, essential activities, just use wisdom and caution, and safe social distancing. Now, closures for our county, this is specific to our county, places of amusement and activity. So lagoon and, and in these swimming pools and things of that nature, movie theaters, things like that. Another thing that was closed are salons and spas. I had a call from my hairdresser, who was taken aback by this. And she's been scrambling, scrambling to try to contact all of her people to make sure that they know that she can't service them at this time. So that is something new and different. So the other thing that's different for Davis County, and all the mayors talked about this last Friday. And we were united that all the cities were going to adhere to this standard. So playgrounds, courts, fields, dog parks, trailheads, all of these things. So anything that can be closed down, we have closed down. We've taken down the nets at pickleball courts, we've locked the courts. When you're at trailheads, do not congregate, do not spend time hanging out together. I've seen big packs of kids, teenagers running. That's probably not in keeping with this health order. So those are the major requirements that are different in this health order. And I just wanted to emphasize that as, as a county, as mayors of the county, we came together and agreed to those, those closures. I also want to say there was a confusing bit in the order that said that if you're a member of a family, that you could use the courts. And practically speaking, that is really hard for the city to be able to accommodate. Because then we're taking reservations and it's unenforceable. So that is why we have just blanket said we will not be opening the pickleball courts or, or any, any fields for even families in the same household. So I would love to turn the time over to Chief Oberg to talk about how we here in Kaysville will be enforcing our, the health order.
Thank you, Mayor. So as with any new legislation or court decisions, one of the first things we do is try to, to figure out what the intent of the law or the decision was. And in this case, most of the Davis County area chiefs spoke with the health department on a conference call to determine just that. And what we were told was that the intent was just to raise the level of social distancing. That Utah has done a good job with this thus far, and Davis County's done a good job. But we're just trying to, to make sure we get through it as unscathed as possible. And so that was the intent of this order. It, it was never to have departments take enforcement action that they don't absolutely have to take. So we don't want to be issuing citations or taking people to jail. Although that is a potential and a possibility, it would, it would be a Class B misdemeanor to violate this health order. But in speaking with health department and every police chief that was on this conference call, none of us look at it that way. And all of us want to just educate, coach, and help people understand this order and comply with it to, to further public safety. In, in Kaysville, we're a very community-based police department. And we really rely on our community members to comply with, with laws and legislations, which our community really does a great job of. And typically, citizens, they, they comply best with laws that they think are fair and are evenly enforced. And as a police department, we're going to do our best to make, to make sure that that's how we approach this. That, that we, it's applied fairly and evenly. And that we're going to do our best job to, to just educate and help people through this, this process. So just like, just like any other approach to a new law, if, if we get a new stop sign in the city, we'll have officers there and they'll talk with people, they'll answer questions. But, but we're really not going to try to, to take a heavy-handed approach to, to this. We got a lot of calls at our dispatch center yesterday with, with questions, people worried about this. And I understand there's a lot of fear with this and uncertainty. And, and that's unfortunate because it comes at a time when people are worried about their health and their jobs and, and other security issues like that. But if they, if they can just email the police department or reach out in other means other than, than dialing 911 or, or using our dispatch center, we try to reserve that for emergencies as, as much as we can or, or critical needs. There is an information line for COVID-19 that's available for the public. It is 1-800-456-7707. And they're, or they're encouraged to contact their healthcare providers if they're worried, if they feel like they have symptoms and they're worried. Their healthcare providers are, are better equipped to help them through some of those situations.
All right, thank you. And I think what the overriding theme that we have as, as a city is that we are going to do the best job that we can so that we don't have to have any additional measures put into place. So far, we've been doing really well. And I appreciate so much our, our community for pulling together like this. And we, we have had people complain about teenagers or kids or, you know, that is something that you're going to need to talk with your neighbors about and talk to parents about. And use your best negotiating skills. I know this is a really hard time, especially with, with young kids and teenagers. And I don't have any of those right now, so I feel for you. But we have some questions. If you look on, for those of you who are on the Zoom call, there's a Q and A box. And we are willing to take some questions. So I'll have a look at these and then if you think of some questions, send them in. All right. All right, here's one. I have a family funeral graveside service. Will that be permitted? All right. Shane, based on what we know, what's, what's the answer to that?
I, I, I believe we will permit that to happen. I know that there have been funerals, however, that have been, had been modified. And of course, you know, the, the, where that is funeral homes and churches have their own policies of how that happens. But graveside, we do allow those. As you mentioned, Mayor, I think you, you go back to the family members only thing, part, part of that, which is, it's really tough. That's a really hard thing for weddings and funerals to be modified in that way. But, but I don't think we're making exceptions for, for those special occasions at this time. So.
Right.
And that's, that's really a challenge and my heart goes out to those folks.
Yeah, and from what I understand, it's 10 or fewer, isn't that right? And so it might be one of those things where you, you delay the celebration of life until you can all be together. But yeah, these are really tricky times and we are so sorry that that's, that's what we need to do at this point.
And Mayor, sorry, I just, calling the city office is the best way to get that answer too. Because you can speak to our Sexton and he will have all that information for, for someone as well. He can walk you through that process.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And we have a question, does Kaysville City foresee adding their own order to the county or city orders? Do you see a progression for reporting type medium to be put into place? So I do not see that Kaysville would go, go it alone and put in anything additional. We are, we're sticking with the county. We want to stick with what the county health department is saying and with the other mayors. And I think that there's a lot of power to that. The other thing, give, for instance, the playground example. If we as a city decide to close down our playgrounds, but Farmington decided not to close down theirs, all of Kaysville's residents are going to go play at their playground. So there's a lot of power in maintaining uniformity across the county. So I don't see that we would institute anything over and above what the county is doing. Okay, we're getting lots of questions. Okay, could you address the Kaysville Community Garden? We have individual plots, wondering if we can use them. Yes, go ahead and just observe good social distancing. What is going to happen to those of us who go to the DATC? As far as I know, DTC is closed. Best answer for that is to call DTC and, and get your questions answered there. Good question. If you have children living in two households, are they okay going back and forth between two households? Hmm, this is a tricky one. I would say yes. What do you say, Saul?
Well, I've actually got some of our own employees that are dealing with that issue. And they are doing it with, trying to work with their former spouse to, to make sure their former spouse is also being responsible with where, where they're going and what they're doing to try not to expose the, the common children. So I, I think you have to do things like that.
Okay, great. Can we take walks as a family before, go hiking on little used trails? Absolutely, yes, absolutely. You may do that, that is encouraged to do that. Do you recommend masks for people going into grocery stores or Home Depot with hundreds of people in the stores? What I'm hearing most recently today is yes, go ahead and wear masks. I think that, that you're, you're not going to go far wrong to wear a mask. So please go ahead and do that. Is gathering 10 or fewer, or is there no gatherings? No gatherings, no gatherings. That is part of this order. If, if your household has more than 10 people in it, that's okay. But you are not to be gathering with anybody outside of your household. That's, that's the rule. Okay? Somebody has a question. I see enforcement measures as a potential constitutional issue where a business, where a business, which is someone's private property can be forcibly closed or people are forcibly prohibited to assemble. It sidelines the 14th Amendment, which protects against discrimination. Hmm, tricky one. Chief?
Well, some of those might be better answered by our city attorney. But what I'm told by the county attorney's office is that the code that they have identified, and, and I can read some of that, some of that, that would be beneficial. The, the code 26A dash 1 dash 123, if you want to look it up. Section 1 states that it is unlawful for any person, association, or corporation to violate any lawful order regarding public health. That's the code that the county attorney's office has referred us to, to use in this, this instance. Section 5 of that code makes it a Class B misdemeanor, as I outlined earlier. So you know, if there, maybe look up that code. And if you have further questions, you can get a hold of our, our city attorney or the county attorney's office, that, that they're probably the appropriate bodies for those questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, here's a question. What about single parents working in essential businesses? What are we supposed to do with our parents being babysitters for us? That is, you're going to have to use your best judgment and wisdom on that. And I don't have a clear answer. Shane, do you have any, anything on that?
No, Mayor, I would, I would just say that I think you need to use your best judgment. Obviously, your children need childcare and, and your parents. I'm more, I'm more concerned about your parents than I would be your child at that point. But I think we kind of have to still make some tough choices and, and do our best.
Yeah, yeah. This is one of those things, you're going to have to chart the way you go and just use your best judgment. And I don't think anybody's going to turn you in, but just, just do the best you can. Have there been any cases reported in Kaysville? So they, the county's being very careful about how they report. And until there are significant numbers, they don't want to say because we are a tight-knit community. And, but what we do know as of last Monday is that there are about 19 cases per 100,000 people in, who are affected here in Kaysville. But obviously, we don't have 100,000 people, so you do the math, as I like to say. Where it is, where COVID-19 has the, the strongest foothold right now is on the south end of the county. So it seems to be migrating up. So that's why we have to be very careful on how we, we observe these regulations so that it stops migrating. Okay, how about grocery stores, banks, pharmacies? Those are called essential services and you may use those. Yes, you may go to them, just keep your six feet social distancing. Okay? Okay, being a business owner in Kaysville, the governor stated we should adapt and innovate and keep employees working. Absolutely true. And keep business alive. Absolutely true. And is, is this still allowed with proper social distancing and below 10 people? Yes, I believe that is, if it's an essential business, wouldn't that be what you, you hear in that, Saul?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Can we take the family for a drive outside, outside the county? Yes, you can. We are not in lockdown. You may cross the county boundaries as much as you want. Staying in the car is a great idea, however, especially if you're traveling anywhere in Salt Lake City. Because you're going to run into COVID-19 more in Salt Lake City than other places. Okay? All right. Is taking recreational vehicles out into the desert while maintaining social distancing? Okay, yes, it is. Sounds like fun. Take me with you. How long will this order remain effective? And right now, May 1st, but based on the way things are going, I, I don't believe that after May 1st, we're going to magically stop social distancing and the rest. I think that there, this is going to be a longer span of time than we would like. But for now, it's through May 1st. How long can the community and businesses endure being shut down like this? We are basically giving chemotherapy to our economy right now. And so it is a very difficult time and we do have resources. So look at coronavirus.utah.gov. It has all of those resources, financial resources assembled in one place. But this is going to be a hard pull right here. And we were here to try to make it a little bit easier. Okay? Is, does a visit to my dentist allowed? I think anything that you can put off, you should put off at this time. So should you go to the dentist just for a cleaning? No. Are you having pain? Use your best judgment, talk to your dentist. Okay? Are there local groups providing support for people who have lost employment? I will direct you once again to go to coronavirus.utah.gov. And I know the Chamber of Commerce is having a webinar tomorrow between 11:00 and 1:00. The information is at coronavirus.utah.gov on that. So is Kaysville City going to be giving relief to small businesses that are deemed nonessential? Again, I will direct you, the state is putting in some bridge loans. If you have employees under 50, go look, not age, number, but go look at coronavirus.utah.gov and they have just instituted some bridge loans. Also, SBA is going to be offering loans to small businesses as well. And if you keep your people employed, those, those loans are forgivable. So go have a look there. I think that that is a good option. So if my business is not explicitly listed as an essential or nonessential, where can you find information or guidelines whether my business is allowed to stay open? Saul?
I, I would say to contact the county health department for clarification.
Yes, yeah. Okay, okay. We, I've left this one for last. Given the crisis and the demand for reliable high-speed internet, is there any plan to accelerate the vote for fiber in the city? No, there is not. And it is, at this point, we are still planning to have it be voted on our residents in November. Okay. Can we keep them employed if we can't stay open? Yes, if you get a loan from the SBA. That's, that's, I will direct you once again, go to coronavirus.utah.gov and where all these resources are assembled and they would be happy to work with you. All right. All right. Are there any other, if there are, there's probably no more questions. Oh, Shane, do you have a question?
I, I just wanted to mention that, that this is being recorded and can be shared. If there's individuals that weren't able to join us at the time, people can watch this after the fact too, if they'd like.
All right, all right. We'll answer a couple more questions that just popped up. We have a trial, a small tree care business, we have two, a two-man crew. We deal, deal with our clients over the phone and payments are done electronically. We have continued to work since we deal with tree trees for food protection. Are we okay to remain in business? I say yes, as long as you can maintain social distancing, I think that you're okay. That is what I would say. What would you say, Shane?
I think the health department was very specific on what did need to close. And I think if you, if you weren't involved in those, you, obviously there's a question about that.
Yeah, check with the county. I'm glad I'm not in charge of that. Check with the county.
They were pretty specific about what, what did need to close immediately. And, and if you're not on that list, you're probably, as long as you can maintain that social distancing, you're probably on the safe side.
Okay. We have a comment. I can handle this as long as we're up and running by football season. Let's hope so. Quick question for those of us out of work in the city, any local outlets to point them to? We are going to, please look at coronavirus.utah.gov. And anything here in Kaysville yet? No. But we are going to keep evaluating that and see if there's anything we can do. There are 350,000 people in Davis County and 103 known cases. Very small percentage. Is it appropriate? Is this an appropriate response for our community to relieve relative to other areas of the world? Yes, I believe that this is the appropriate response. You'll notice that we are not shelter-in-place, we are not closing down everything. We're doing the best we can. We're doing the best we can. But the important thing that we're trying to do right now is we're trying to stop the spread. Even if our numbers are very low right now, if we do not do something, those numbers are going to go very high. And I can't live with that. And so we are trying to have a a a response that is even handed at this point and is based on what the data dictates. And so that's that's how we're going. The U of U virtual courses tomorrow is free and was mentioned by the governor in his update yesterday. Absolutely, so, okay, all right. So that those are our questions, we're about at half an hour. We appreciate you guys for coming on. If there are questions that you think of later, then please email me or email mailbox@kasevillcity.com. We, I intend to have more frequent town hall meetings like this. When we're far apart and we can't get together, the most precious thing that I can give you is information. So we will try to have more of these so we can answer your questions and and take your 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 feedback. Always willing to answer emails or phone calls. And again, we're doing this so that we don't have to have stricter stricter measures coming up. And so thank you for what you're doing, keep up the good work. And we will, we'll have another one of these sometime soon. So thank you.